I pledge my wishes to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to the Goldendale City Council for April 19th. Glad to see everyone here. Connie, could you give a roll call so we'll know how it rolls here?
Julie. Lauren.
President.
Kevin.
Happily here.
Andy.
Here.
Phil.
Here.
And Mylan.
Here.
Did we have ever have anything from Julie? Okay, did they have a motion to excuse her? Do we have a motion to excuse?
Yes Mayor, I saw a move that we excuse Julie.
Okay. Have a second?
I second.
Thanks, thank you. It's been moved and seconded to excuse Julie Buck from attending this session at Goldendale City Council. All in favor, say aye.
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 Very good, thank you. Connie, would you like to carry out the roll call?
Pardon me?
Could you do the roll calls? She did that already. Oh, where was I? Okay. The next item then on the agenda is the approval of the agenda and the consent agenda, and we need a motion for that as well.
Uh Mayor, this is Andy. Before we do that, I wanted to point out, I know it was a big deal, but if Larry was her last meeting and he wasn't, do we need to change that?
Yes, I've already been told that.
Okay, that's good.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do we have a motion for the agenda?
Mayor, this is Andy. I will make a motion for the consent agenda and the agenda with the correction on the consent agenda.
Very good. Thank you Andy, do we have a second?
I'll say aye.
Kevin.
That's fine.
It's been... Motion's been made to approve the agenda as amended to include the absence of Larry Bellamy at the last session and the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? No motion passes. The next item is a presentation that will be given by Kay Garter Schmidt on handicap parking downtown. We're anxious to hear your...
Let me have...
If that's okay with you.
Sure.
Otherwise you can be in that chair.
Oh, no, I need to stand. Okay, thank you. I'm almost 70 years old, and I've lived in Goldendale on and off my whole life. And for about the past couple of years, I've been using my third leg. And I've noticed there isn't many handicap spots in town. There's 158 parking spots between Chatfield and Golden, on the south side and on the north side. Out of those 158, there's only eight handicap spots.
Is that about the blue?
Yeah, for handicap, right. One's down by the Health Department, the other two are in front of Columbia Bank, um not Bank. Then if you get into the middle of Main Street, you have one, I call it the old medical building. There were the Strickles, the Crossing, and then in front of the Simcoe. Then you go down, and then there's one down at Dr. Ogden's. Then you go down on the west side of town, there's one in front of the Senior Center, and one in front of Gee's. That's it. And trying to find a parking spot... Pardon me?
I said yes.
Oh, trying to find a parking spot, especially in front of KC Pharmacy, is impossible. Now that things are opening up again, you just can't find them. And especially, just not for somebody that has a hard time walking, but really anybody that just needs to run in, come back out again. Is there a way... No, I don't want to... I would like to see the city put in at least two handicap spots in front of KC Pharmacy from the corner of Columbus going west. Doesn't do any good having it there on Columbus because right now it's all under construction.
That's not the best place to be.
No, it's not, especially if you're trying to get in and out of your car. I mean, for people to walk across the street from, uh, you'll have to excuse me, I don't know the name of the new places, I'm gonna say the old Evergreen, that, you know, I'm just looking around the room, I don't think many of us could run across the street if we had to. I know I couldn't, but people that go into the restaurants or some of the shops, they can run across the street or get across the street really quick. I can't. But is there a city ordinance stating you can only have so many handicap spots?
I don't think it sets a limit, and I think it's something we can do. It may take a while to get it, the details worked out on getting it painted and where they should be, but we can do that.
Okay, I mean, it would, I've asked them, well, this is when Connie and Carrie owned the pharmacy, and they said, "That's not up to us." And then I just kind of put it in the back of my mind, and then when I thought about it again, everything shut down. And now that I'm going in quite a bit, because my dad was the type, "Oh, I can walk it." Well, he was walking in there at 101. You know, I can't even walk in there. So it, like I said, I'm just not doing it for myself, but I'm doing it for really everybody that may get older or have to walk with, you know, some help.
Exactly.
That, I'm surprised that it hasn't, that somebody hasn't mentioned it.
I am too, I am too, and I probably have looked for it and wondered why.
Yeah, and, you know, even the ones that are downtown, you can't really see, and even some of the signs, oh, let's see, down in front of the Senior Center, that say like no parking between this time and this time, they're so faded, you can't even read them. And I really had a lot of fun counting all the parking spots going up and down the street the other day. But there are 158. So, anyway, that's all I have to say on that, and thank you for letting me speak, I appreciate it.
We're really happy that you came in.
Well Mayor, what department would we have look into this?
Public Works.
Public Works, so they can go down and, and sort of the area and see what's the best?
Yeah, I don't think it will take long, but it's just a matter of making it the best place.
Don't you have a committee?
He just mentioned that we should have referred to the Public Works Committee.
Oh, I thought it was traffic.
Refer it to the who?
Public Works.
Public Works?
We also have a Traffic Safety Committee. Either one would work, the Traffic Safety Committee doesn't really have, other than one council member on the, on the board. The Public Works Committee however, is a standing committee and has three council members that are on that particular committee. Might get better input from the Public Works Committee.
Exactly, they're the ones doing the work.
Because they would be, we would be directing Public Works Department to make any changes and ask for any advice on the concerns that she has about the need for additional parking.
Sure, yeah, okay.
So, and then we'd probably involve the Building Department as well, because he has information with regard to ADA requirements in the city and parking lots and things like that, so you have an idea of what's, but the minimum number of parking spaces is needed versus what we want.
Right, okay. It's a very practical request.
Yeah, it's very.
It's doable.
Yeah, well, thank you. I'm just not looking out after me, I'm looking out at all of us.
Yes, sure.
You currently do meet the minimum requirement, which is six per 200 spaces, okay, but you can't, you can't have additional, so, but you meet the minimum at least.
Well, even if, I know in some cities, they have, let's see, handicap like between nine and five, written on the sign at the bottom. Now, since a pharmacy is only open like from 9:30 to 6:00, Monday through Friday, and then a few hours on Saturday, you know, I'm looking during the week, is what I'm looking at.
When traffic gets the heaviest.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, this is no reflection on any of the businesses taking up all the other parking, but, you know, if you're just running in for five minutes to get a card or your prescription, and you have to go around the block and around the block, or park a half a block away, it's, now...
No, it'll get taken care of. It may take a little while, but we'll get it.
Okay, I appreciate it.
I appreciate you letting us know the situations here. The next item on the agenda is the department reports, and we don't have representative, the Police Department, Jay Huntziker is coming back from sick leave tomorrow, and for the Goldendale Fire Department, Noah Hong, is on special training on firefighting that's taking place at the fire stations, so he won't be here. And I'll ask his, Doug Phantom?
Doug's not on here.
So we don't have representative of Public Works as well. We'll have Jay Huntziker here the next council meeting for sure. Next item on the agenda is the council business, and we'll turn that over to Larry for the first item, the RRR Development LLC Preliminary Platte Subdivision Decision. Larry?
Okay, we've had a request, and we started meeting with Triple R Development back in December of 2020, when they initially met with the Subdivision Review Committee regarding their, their proposal to construct roads and utilities in, off of 18th Street, off of South Columbus and Jackson Street. We've gone through quite a process of preliminary Platte requirements, we did, went through a SEPA in December and January, we did, had a public hearing with Planning Commission on the, on the proposed subdivision. The Board of Adjustment met on a request to vary, to do a variance before the Board of Adjustment, and that was approved on April 1st, which I believe is... Yes. So the Board of Adjustment met, and they allowed the reduction of the width of residential arterios from 32 feet to 24 feet, and installation of the phased-in of the sidewalk construction, the reduction of the rezone requests from 19 to six lots, and increasing the number of off-streets parking spaces for each residential unit from one space to two spaces. And this of course would only be done if, if we go ahead and move forward on the subdivision. Then we reviewed all of it. Yes?
Larry, this is Andy. I have some concerns about this. Do they have plans to, to have that whole subdivision all the way to the back of that lot?
Yes.
So my concern is, is narrowing down that street.
Correct.
What is the width of 21st Street?
21st Street, Dustin, can you help me out with that one?
I would think it's 32 feet.
I believe it's 32 feet.
Okay, so I know from my experience on the fire department, along with my, the fire chief and my father being on there, and issues we've had on 21st Street with fires, that narrow of a street clogs everything up.
Right, so that's why I also...
If they're gonna put more houses, if they're gonna put more houses out back there, and they're gonna narrow down that street to 24 feet, I have major concerns with that.
Right, that's why part of this is also a requirement to, to increase the number of off-street parking and to eliminate any on-street parking.
So, this is Lauren, on 21st Street, there is on-street parking, correct?
Correct.
I still have concerns, I mean, you can have tell people they like to park in the driveway, but then if they have friends over or whatever, that's gonna narrow down that street, and then you're gonna have more houses in the back. I think it's the wrong decision to allow the street to be that, at 24 feet, but that's my stance on that.
Okay, well, the, they've gone through a variance request through the Board of Adjustment, and the Board of Adjustment had concerns about that as well, but felt they were able to mitigate the request by increasing the number of parking spaces required off-street. So instead of the, instead of there just being one parking space required off-street, they would require two parking spaces off-street. And then they would sign the rest of, they'd sign the roadways.
Larry, I understand what you're saying, but I looked at, at my family, when we grew up, there's three of us kids, we all three had vehicles, and my dad had a vehicle, and there was, you know, a driveway for two vehicles, well then, now we have extra drivers, that street is gonna get clogged up real quick. That's my opinion, and that, I, I mean, I know Goldendale needs more homes, and we need to move forward, if the subdivision be great, but I think it's the wrong decision to allow that street to get narrowed.
I'm really agree with that, as does Phil. I think if, if this, if we were to move with that, a street being narrowed, it would have to be all no parking, red zone, all the way through. Would not. Whether you have more parking on the house lot or not, having vehicles parked there would be way too restrictive just for another vehicle. 21st Street is already narrow enough when you drive through there in a passenger car, with cars on both sides. So if the street was to be narrow, it would have to be a no parking zone through that whole area, so there are no obstacles along the road.
Well that was part of the just...
And I, I'm not sure if the variance committee would want that, but I would have hoped that department heads were involved in that, and other people looking at different aspects other than, yeah, it sounds good. Whether the idea is to park more vehicles on the house, I agree with Andy that when you have a party, when you have people over, when you have teenagers that are now driving, the number of vehicles adds, and it doesn't matter how many parking spots you have on, on your house.
Larry, is there, I, I know maybe a way around this. I noticed that the street isn't necessarily right on the property line to the north of where the street's gonna be. Is there any way they could put gravel there or make off-street parking there?
That, that's a possibility, I'd have to ask Dustin if he felt like that would be a possibility. I think there is room.
I just don't wanna make, I just don't wanna make a sound I'm against the housing development in Goldendale, because we all know that Goldendale needs housing. I just, I'm really concerned with how you're gonna have everyone acquire two vehicles to park there, and, you know, now if you say no parking zone on the street, like Phil's suggesting, which is gonna have to be that way if that's the street, if that's how narrow it's gonna be. I, there's gotta be, you know, on that door side of that road, maybe there's a way they could put gravel there or something, or make it, I don't know what kind of curbing they planned, but if they have the rolled curves, maybe they can have parking on, off the road there.
Yeah, I think in some locations, that's definitely a possibility, is to add additional parking off the street and gravel that area. This would be consistent with what was done on the West Neighborhood Project a few years ago, where they don't allow any off-street parking. I believe part of the, the variance request for approval did require signage that no on-street parking, and so that's, that's already incorporated into this request, as well as, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to, to pay for paved parking for everyone on-street. You know, moving forward, that's a larger maintenance for the city, and that's part of what's been considered in the West Neighborhood Project, when that was done just four or five years ago. It's an increased maintenance cost forever, once that, that width is added.
Especially if there was gravel.
This is, this is, I just like that, I appreciate that it was done in the past, however, we can't keep doing the same thing over and over just because we did it in the past. And there might be a maintenance there, but from a public safety standpoint, the lives are more valuable than the fees for maintaining the roadway. Also, a narrow road is in the street, and the new subdivisions usually tends to bring young families, but young kids, that are running across the street chasing balls, with that narrow of a street, it restricts the driver's view up ahead. With more vehicles in the street, it restricts driver's view up ahead. So you're increasing the risk accidents, and those are things to be looking at, not just what we did in the past and what's improved in the past, and we should just keep doing it, saying, there's a lot of streets here in Goldendale that are way too narrow for even a car to drive by. So those are things that we should consider in bringing in young families to a neighborhood. I'm, I'm all for the house, and we definitely need the house, but realize that you're bringing young families that are gonna have, you know, new families, new babies, new kids, new partners, new children, and it's, it's just gonna be a risk. So those, those are the things that we should be considering, not just how much is the city gonna have to pay after maintaining the road. When the developer is done selling the houses, they pack up and they're done. And the mess, if there was mess left behind, yes, left to the city, or to the homeowners to figure out down the road. So there's a couple aspects here, and we need to look at foresight, looking at future, what is this one to look like down the road? What is this one look like when those families now have teenagers, when there's, you know, so many cars and buses to the road?
Kevin has his hand up.
Kevin?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, what, what is the Washington State standard, what, what does the law say for the width of the street, minimal?
They vary in every area. The, the minimum requirement is for the fire standard, which is a 20-foot width, hard surface, and so there's many roads in the county that just are that 20-foot width minimum. I, I think, maybe we're losing track a little bit, that actually cars parked in roadways is more dangerous than cars parked off of roadways. When, when cars are parked in roadways, they, they block the view of what's going on in the roadway, and much more likely to have a, a child ran over when they're, they're running out from behind a parked car that's parked in the roadway than one that's parked on the backside of the curb. So, so definitely difference maybe of opinion, but also of, of how these, these roads work.
I, but I also have a problem with, with no parking on the street, and you're limiting the homeowner's two vehicles. And like Phil and I are saying, when it's with the younger family, that people, now they have three or four vehicles, where are they gonna park? And that's my concern with, I mean, I understand if there's no parking on the street, I'm all, that, that's great, okay, then there's enough, you know, you can drive two cars down the road, no problem. But I think they need to have a plan of either on that north side of that street, they need to have it leveled out and have gravel there so people can park there. I think that should be a requirement.
So your current city at Goldendale standards requires one off-street parking per residential unit, and as part of this subdivision, we're increasing it to two per unit, so we're doubling it. And then also, not only that, there's a, a larger width between the back of the curb and the front of the house, because the house still has a setback from the right-of-way line to the front of the house. And so, in most cases, a car could be parked too deep and still be outside of the paved roadway, you know, with, with some advanced thought or, or smaller cars, you know, if everyone's driving a, a 22-foot wide bus, or long bus, or longer, of course, there's gonna be issues. But in most time, you know, if you've got two cars that are 16 feet, you're gonna be 32 feet off the back of curb or sidewalk, because the road's gonna be centered, and there's a larger width between the back of the curb and the front of the house.
Well, what I'm more concerned with, I'm not concerned with, and I, I look at the, the picture of the, the lots. What I'm having the issue is, there's three or four lots that base northward, there's not gonna be much of a driveway on those houses. Those are small lots. So I don't see where they're gonna have enough park, well, it just comes back again, if we're not gonna park on the street, now you're gonna have, such on those lots. You know, I guess like, my, my point is, I think the north side of that road, you need to have leveled out gravel so people can park, because, that, I don't think that's gonna work on that, on 18th Street there for those lots there.
Do you understand what he's saying? Yeah.
I'm not concerned so much with the lots back behind, but I'm more concerned with lots of those first few lots, and if they continue to build back there, I don't know what those lots are gonna look like, but I think that whole north side, they need to have it planned to where they have it leveled, with gravel, where there can be parking off the street there.
Lauren's got his hand up.
Lauren?
Yeah, I just, I just wanna make sure that we're all talking about the same thing, there, there's, you know, there is parking provided, it's just off-street parking, there would not be any on-street parking. So rather than, than having a wider street with parking on the street, as I understand it, that compromises, the street's narrower, but the parking occurs off-street. So it's, it's really a trade that maybe actually makes it safer, I think, possibly. Not that there isn't any parking available, and people won't be able to, to park their vehicles, and stuff, it could be two to three spaces per lot. I just wanna make sure I'm understanding that correctly Dustin, and then, I guess my other concern would be that if we're, current ordinance only requires providing parking for one vehicle, then that's something that we definitely need to address soon, and that we need to change. Obviously, a lot of households have more than one vehicle these days, but I would hate, hate for this to hold up, this application, when they're trying to comply with current ordinance, and trust me, I understand the frustration of that sometimes, because that's what got me on city council in the first place, is dealing with old ordinance that is a little bit outdated, and, and I just think that we need to be cautious about putting extra requirements out there that aren't in ordinance on applications where we're trying to promote development.
All right, this, this is Andy again, I have a question, how, how deep are those lots on 18th Street? Because the, the paper I got, I can't see how deep those lots are.
A little over 73 feet, almost 74.
Okay, that's, you know, you know, usually a six lots, 100 feet deep. You know, you can put a house on there, and you put a driveway on there, there's not gonna be much room for having a, you know, a curb, parking spot, sidewalk, and then house. I, I don't understand where we're getting, there's gonna be more parking on the off-street there.
The, so a standard city lot is 50 by 100, so you'd be limited to like a 40-foot wide house, versus our lots are basically 74 feet deep by 100 feet in width. So you're, these are actually more square footage, it's just that your house would be oriented in a different direction.
We still have the space too, from the back of the curb, and...
Yes, there, there's still 11 feet there.
Right away, and then you've got the setback, you still have to...
You know, I, I don't know what the setback is in...
15 feet.
Is 15 feet, so there's 26 feet from the face of the garage to the back of the sidewalk that would be the very minimum that someone could build to. that would be the very minimum that someone could build to.
One question there. So, north of the street, what's gonna be, what would be there then? Do the elements... So what would be here then?
That's just, that's our, actually, our stormwater detention area.
Oh, okay. Well, I understand, you know, where everyone's coming from. If it was gravel, then the winter months, well, then the snowplow would come by and scrape up a lot of the gravel. But anyway, but I know where Andy's coming from, and the other comments that, yeah, it's a concern. But like I say, I think we all wanna try to get this moving, so, anyway, that's my comment, Mayor.
Any other comments or questions from the council?
Lauren, your hand's still up. Did you wanna say something?
No, I'll put that down.
Okay.
Good for now. Thanks for clarifying, Dustin.
Is Quinn on the line? The other thing that we could consider is, which we'll have to, maybe we should go to the rezone part next, because another way to reduce the number of vehicles would be to not approve the rezone, for instance.
Yeah, that would be not what we do.
And you wanna discuss rezone before... I'd like to discuss rezone before we come, and then we'll come back to the subdivision.
Okay, we're discussing the second item. And it's the development rezone application decision. It's the next document on your, in your packet, as a possible solution for what we're discussing regarding parking.
Okay, the rezone request was originally brought to the Planning Commission, and was part of the CEPA review. The rezone application was applied for to subdivide 5.3 acres into 19 lots. And the discussion by the variance board, which is the first attachment to the agenda item that was prepared by our attorney on the rezone application. And in that, they made several, as we've been discussing, they made several suggestions as far as their final action and recommendation, which we've gone over. And so the initial rezone request was to rezone all 19 of these lots. And when that, when the concerns we were talking about, especially parking, were discussed, we felt like, or I should say, the variance board or the Board of Adjustment felt like, if we reduced that from 19 lots to six lots, which would be the six lots that face 18th Street, and to increase the number of off-street parking spaces from one to two, and sign it, so that there was no on-street parking, then they would consider that a variance to the subdivision that was requested, and that we could move forward on the subdivision. So as far as the rezone portion of this is concerned, the options are to approve the rezone application, to approve the rezone application subject to conditions, and, or deny the rezone application. So if we approve the rezone application as it was originally proposed, then they could build duplexes on all 19 lots. But because of the variance, and the issues related to parking, and especially parking, it was changed to six. So number two, you could approve the rezone subject to conditions, which would now be six lots that could be R2 versus 19. Or deny the rezone application, which would ultimately have that number go down to zero, if you were to deny the rezone application. The subdivision could still move forward if it chose to. And so, and then that would further address the issue of parking along 18th Street. Because now, you would not have duplex on each one of those lots. You would have a single-family home on each one of those lots. Does that make sense? Anybody have any questions regarding how that works?
To me, it's not making a lot of sense, I guess. I'm confused on what options are which.
Okay, let me go through it again. The rezone, if we approve the rezone application as proposed, all 19 lots could be built with duplexes. If you approve it with conditions, the condition that the variance board put on the approval of the subdivision was to reduce the number of lots, or that'd be the rezone, excuse me. The rezone would reduce the number of lots that could have duplexes built on them, from 19 to six. And if you deny the rezone application, it would take it from six to zero. So basically, instead of, and so you would have 19 single-family homes on there if you denied the rezone application. If you did it with conditions, you would have 13 single-family homes and six possible duplexes. Does that make sense, Andy?
Kind of, I, sorry, I'm just, so are all these homes gonna be duplexes? Or just those, the ones with the conditions, that we're talking about, those would be duplexes then?
Right, that's what the variance board said to do, was to make it...
So, so correct me if I'm wrong. So if they're duplex, you're talking about having more parking? So that means there's gonna be two families in each lot?
Correct.
And then you're telling, there's gonna be two parking places per duplex?
Correct.
Or one per duplex?
Two parking spaces for each duplex.
Okay. It's still, it's still, I don't feel like there's enough parking in that. Is there any way we can add to, they have to, on the north side of that street, have off-street parking? Like a gravel patch there?
Is that encroach on anything, any utilities or anything, Dustin?
The stormwater system's gonna be located on the north side of the street. But maybe that can be capped and parked on top of it. But again, the property to the north could be developed as well. And that's gonna be a public street, so it would be dedicated to the city. And you guys would be, you have to limit, potentially, what could be done on the north side, if you require that area to be parking, this subdivision.
Right, so the, but that could be adjusted in the future, I suppose. When a new subdivision would be, or a short plan would be discussed, and there would actually be access through there, then we'd have to take that into consideration if we allowed more parking over there.
Mayor, isn't there a bank between what you're talking about, the street and the lots north?
I don't...
Was that a big bank there?
No.
Okay, I guess I'm a little off on that, okay. Well, what's RR's opinion on this? Do they want all, is it...
Well, they, their original request was for all 19 lots to be duplexes.
Oh, okay.
That was their original request.
Okay.
Part of the variance package to mitigate for the narrower street was to reduce that number from 19 to six.
Okay.
And the six lots are those that are facing north on 18th Street. So Andy is suggesting that we provide not only the two parking spaces per each duplex, but to also add parking along the north side of the road, which would be kind of auxiliary parking for that, for that area.
Yeah. I like that idea, but then that's up, whatever the other counsel, but then, like I say, the winter months might be a little problem, but then, overall...
Go ahead.
Well, that's just my opinion, that in the winter months, the snowplow would come by. But then, you know, it's not gonna be used, it wouldn't be used all the time, but once in a while, you know, like somebody says, they have a little birthday party or whatever, and they can park two or three cars over there on that side, you know, whatever. But then we have an ordinance where somebody just can't bring in a rig and just park it and leave it there forever. And we have that ordinance, I think.
Yes.
Right. And you have a comment?
Lauren and Kevin both have their hands up.
Lauren?
I'll go ahead and defer to Kevin and comment afterwards.
Kevin?
Hey, so what, I'm asking, I'm trying to picture something in my head. So these duplexes and towns, and even on the last one we were talking about, they don't have garages?
So we're not, our proposal is not actually to construct and figure out what the houses look like, or how many bedrooms each duplex is gonna have. I mean, they could be single-bedroom duplexes, but we're not proposing that. What we're proposing is to create lots to be built on in the future, or maybe someone would like to purchase one and construct a duplex. And so it's tough to say exactly what they're gonna look like until they're constructed, but most likely, they would have a garage attached to them. And so, one lot with a duplex on it would have four off-street parking spaces, is what we're currently proposing. And, you know, most duplexes aren't three or four bedroom on each side. Most of them are like one or two bedroom on each side. And so, you know, if you've got four kids and you're living in one of these duplexes, most likely, you know, you're gonna need a house instead of one of these duplexes. People tend to live where they fit, also. And so I think that part of what needs to be brought in, too, is that if this is a duplex, there's not gonna be six people living there, most likely. It's gonna be, you know, two or three people that live in one of these duplexes, and two parking spots would.
Fair enough, but I think people tend to live where they can afford. I think my last point on this issue is, we're kinda sorta, we're trying to grow the city, but we're kinda concluding new development. And so we're kinda stuck in the middle here, and I don't know what direction to go. And I'll leave you all with that one. But one other comment. When people throw a party, not everybody throws a party in the same day. You may have a choke point at one house, you're not gonna have a choke point down the entire street. And I'm done, sorry.
Lauren? Lauren?
Yeah, I guess a couple of comments, and one to follow up on. Kevin's point is that, you know, we've been talking about trying to incentivize development, and trying to have some new housing in Goldendale for some time now. And we get to this point, and it sounds like we're really trying to, not that we're trying to put up roadblocks, but, you know, people have legitimate concerns, and it is restricting what can be done, potentially, or potentially designed by committee. And I just, I think we really wanna try and work with developers to try and encourage a positive development. Maybe that's a gravel parking strip, maybe they'd rather just go to a 32-foot wide street. But I feel like we should be trying to maybe provide some incentive for the, encouraging this kind of activity. So working with the developers to accomplish that. I think that maybe if they wanna weigh in, or if we wanna have a subcommittee to work on this, it'd be great to try and get it concluded fairly soon. But I just would hate for us to pass a motion that influences the direction that this has to go, and we end up with the developers walking away from it and choosing their best somewhere else.
Phil's got his hand up.
This is Andy. I wanna make it really clear, I am not against this housing development. I'm concerned with public safety getting fire incidents up and down that road, especially if they add in another 20 lots out back behind there, or more. And then also parking. I know that, you know, the duplex, yeah, you're right, there's probably gonna be a single couple, you know, or single people, or a couple, or, you know, small family. But now that they have two parking places, what's gonna happen if they wanna have a birthday party? Where are those people gonna park? What if they have a wedding at their house? Where are those people gonna park? I know it's not gonna happen all the time, but that's something we do need to look at in the future. So people will buy there, so they can host parties, so they can have people up at their home, instead of, oh, there's nowhere to park, you can't come here. To me, that's more negative than anything. But that's my opinion, and I, like I said, I'll go back to that north side of the street. If there needs to be parking there, that's the only way I will vote yes for this.
Phil's got his hand up.
And Andy, I totally respect your, and Filberto's comments, too. And I think it's great to be thinking about public safety. I'm just saying, let's not, let's not say you gotta put a gravel pad in, and that's the solution. Let's try and work with the developer, maybe they want a 32-foot wide street. You know, construction costs are just outrageous. If that's part of what's driving the narrower street, maybe we can do something to help with permanent fees, or hookups, or whatever the case may be. But let's just try and create an environment where the city's working with developers to get a win-win for everybody. I guess that's the point that I was trying to make, even if that's maybe not how it came across.
I'm gonna address this to Larry, and Dustin, are we at a point where we can move ahead?
This is Phil, if I can ask something, really. Just a couple of things. I think, one, with the issue with parking, there was the open parking on the street. We already have people parking there. Traders, RVs, et cetera, on the roadway. We have an issue with the lack of enforcement of that parking. Or when people get a ticket or a warning, they come to council, and then we backtrack on the whole ordinance, as a whole. So with that being said, that would be a bad situation, continuing on there. Somebody would bring their RV, and then they get a warning, and then council was to back up, backtrack on enforcement of the ordinance, that's restricted. So I would stand still and call no parking area, the road is more restrictive. But I do agree that we should work with the developers. And I think, at this point, it would be wise to say, the developer, the developers have heard our concerns, with the parking situation, with the movement, you know, easily through that road. And I think, maybe they can come up with a game plan, or a design that would fit their needs, and still address, not, maybe not all our concerns, but some of our concerns. The other thing I would like to ask is, and maybe this was done before, or it should be done, is I would like the way in from the department head on how it affects their agency. So if it's, you know, I don't wanna make decisions for public safety, but if Chief Hunsaker has a concern with accidents and things like that, I think we should hear from him, and I think that should be required on any development or road issues. The same thing is, we should have recommendations from, so Chief Hunsaker, from Chief Home. He should be able to freely, without being told what to do, write his concerns to council, put them in writing, so we can weigh that in. And also from code enforcement. They already have issues with the trailers being parked in the road, so what's his state on the parking situation? And then once we hear from everybody, I would feel more comfortable making a decision. Because it's, you know, those are my concerns, that's what I see, but it's not for me to impose it on... impose it on the developer and spend more money, or less money, or whatever it is. But I think as a city, each department head that has any involvement in that should write out what their opinion of it is, and I think the developer has heard our concerns, and maybe they can go back and assess it and say, okay, this is what we can do, this is what our designs should do, or no, this is works that exists, so either you guys approve it, or you don't. But it shouldn't be up to us to make final decisions, I think it's a work in progress, and that's worth everybody to hear their opinions. If Chief Hansaker has no concerns with it, if Chief Home has no concerns, and if code enforcement has no concerns, then we're just taking our time.
Well, Mayor?
I'd like to point out one thing first, this work was all done through a planning commission that was selected and put into place by the city, and there were rural, there were open discussions on this, and this point did not come up to the extent that we're drawing it to now, and I think we need to give them a little bit of space to work out the best solution for the developer, as well as for the neighborhood, and to turn this back because of birthday parties is not going to sound good.
Well, no, I was just going, would we, would this hurt if we put this off for one week, till we make a decision to the next meeting? That way, we have an opportunity to talk to the people, the developer, is that going to create a problem with the developer?
They were pretty, I think one week won't hurt, but I don't know about which.
Yeah, I don't think one week would hurt either, but I think we need to put this a little bit in perspective, is that we submitted this application on December 20th.
Exactly.
We're, you know, four months into it, and the comments on record have been addressed, and now all of a sudden, new comments are being brought up. I don't think it's quite fair to developers to drag out this process when it's, you've had 160 days, how long do you need? I do think there maybe are some valid points, and maybe, you know, I think someone could make a motion with conditions of approval of maybe either a wider street or a parking area, if that's necessary, but I still think that, in my time in Goldendale, this is not in reference to this project, but I've heard very positive comments about the West Neighborhood Project and the narrower streets, and how nice it is to drive in that area without cars parked on it, and how clear it is. Public Works has commented to me how much better it is to plow snow in the winter without having any cars there, to complete their street sweeping without any cars there, and so, while this may be also a monetary value to reduce street width, it was also done with the inside of the city, and some of their direction on how they liked those streets. So, I, to me, we've gone through the process, we've had our meetings, and it's only fair that we get our vote to move forward.
Just to clarify, so, right now, what is being asked is two parking spots per household, basically, and no street parking, correct?
No. Dustin, can you clarify, that's not how I understand, there's to be a driveway with each lot that you park in, as well as two parking spots, you know, for a standard vehicle, off-street parking, but a basically gravel strip that's outside of the roadway, is that correct, Dustin?
So, what we're proposing is that each house have two off-street parking, so essentially, they would have a driveway that is a hard surface, that would allow for two cars to park, not including any garage space, and then there would also be room, because of the 15-foot setback and the distance from the back of sidewalk to the property, there's about 26 feet minimum, and that would be assuming that someone built a 45-foot deep house by roughly 80 feet wide, to take up the remainder, which isn't actually even allowed, because I believe the city's got a coverage percentage to.
50% is our limit.
So, the 50% coverage requirement is also going to limit the amount of square feet that each of these duplexes is going to be, if a duplex was in fact constructed on. So, a duplex would have four off-street parking spots, that would be in a driveway, not on the street. There is additional width there to park more cars potentially, if someone desired to do that as well.
Okay, and so, would there be on-street parking?
On-street parking would not be allowed as part of the narrower street, they would be signed and posted that no on-street parking.
Okay, so I would be okay with that, if the street is narrow, there would be no on-street parking already as designed, and would be occasional event that somebody parks on the street every so often.
So, I understand you guys want those two out front of the house, between the sidewalk and the street, for the parking, I understand that, but on a 74-foot deep lot, you're going to literally have no front yard and no backyard. Just, I'm going to point that out, and I'll let everyone make their decision, so.
Let me, let's just make sure we got all the numbers correctly, because you've got to have a setback of 15 feet in the front and a setback of 15 feet in the back, in the rear yard, and that's a total of 30, and you're saying the total width of the lot is how much, 74?
The total depth, 74.
Total depth, so your limitation on this depth of the house, or the width of the house, would be 40 feet about.
Yes, and plus, you also have the 50% maximum coverage requirement, so it's going to limit the size of the house as well.
Right, so, especially if they bought, if they made that into a duplex, then that's, how big will duplex can you build then?
Well, your footprint may not be very big, but you could do two-story.
That's true.
Any other comments or questions from the council?
I just want to say with that, no street parking, I'm okay with the proposed chief request.
I think the off-street parking solves the fire truck problem, as well as movement for Public Works, and the cars will not be on that roadway, they'll be parked in driveways or on that gravel strip on the other side of the street.
So, are you saying you were suggesting that they build the gravel strip?
If that's something that's already been discussed, and you want to do it, that would make sure you've really got off-street solved.
Can I ask a question? Is there room enough to do like you did over here on this project over in West, to put the off-street parking?
There is on the street side, but when you build a duplex, and we're providing four off-street parking spots, it's going to reduce the amount of area that you have to do that side parking, just because your driveways are going to take up so much space in order to get, 18 feet would probably be a minimum driveway width to get two cars parked on, and so if you've got two of them, that's 36. There is a little bit additional space maybe to get one on, one additional off-street, if that area was gravelled.
So, you think it would be workable, there should be gravel on both sides, or not? I don't want to introduce any parties of discussion.
We'd have to go back and look on the north side and see what that would do to the drainage facility, because currently, one of our challenges on this project is that this area isn't connected to the city's stormwater system, so we have to dispose all additional stormwater within the project, and so we were using that area for our stormwater infiltration and detention area.
But right now, we have approval on the fact that parking on the street will not be allowed.
Correct.
If this is done with conditions, will that allow them to solve the problem themselves, or not, the developers?
The developers are already aware of the additions, where you increase the number of parking spaces that were off-street, and that there would be no on-street parking.
Right, and that's what they've done.
And that's, and so there, as I understand it, they're willing to accept that.
So, Mayor, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve the changes, both in the street width and in the lots, as recommended, I think, as six off-street?
Yes.
Okay, as recommended, with the requirement, also as recommended, that there would be no on-street parking allowed, as designed, and with the recommendation or encouragement to the developer to plan, if possible, for additional off-the-area parking on the dirt lot to the north of the street, not a requirement, but just a strongly encouraged request, because I know that would cost a lot of money to change the storm drainage design.
It's Kevin, just real quick, Mayor?
Yes, Kevin?
I, I kind of, I'm going with Phil right now, but at the same time, I kind of want to turn to the developer and say, when he's doing his designs, and he's thinking about all the aspects of building out the homes here, if he could find a way to expand that street a little, a little bit more, I know he's been, he's been hardworking, he's trying to figure it out, but if he understands that we are concerned about it, but I do think we need to move forward.
I agree, so Kevin, would you say another would begin, not a requirement, but encouragement for them to look at their concerns we voiced, and possibly include them in future design?
Yes, yeah, because right now, he doesn't even know if he's putting garages in, we don't know what they're actually doing, so it's.
Right.
It's a little, it's a little shallow of an idea from what we're trying to envision, but we don't want to slow them down, because we do need the development in the city, we don't need to slow them down, but we do need them to think about our wishes, and our fears, and our worries, and I digress, sorry.
I agree, so I amend my motion to include that purpose, to ask the developer to, or encourage the developer to look at our concerns in future designs and development of the lots.
Okay, so Kevin was, did you second that motion, or, because we got Phil's first motion?
Yeah, yeah, I'll go ahead and do that, I don't want to slow down the growth of Goldendale, we have too many people living in single-wide trailers, we need to get them out of there.
Then we have a motion in a second to approve the subdivision as presented in by the planning commission, giving encouragement to address the problem of on-street, of off-street parking, in order to provide public safety within the neighborhoods.
Mayor, one quick question, when you said, Phil, when you said to increase the width, were you, was that still in the motion, or of the street?
Yeah, so I'll amend my motion to include Kevin's purpose to encourage the developer to look at the width.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, not a requirement, but just encouragement as they move forward with the development.
Yes. I agree, we need to move forward.
This motion is encouraging, not requiring, and it's to their best interest anyway.
I have faced that, that, you know, they'll look at our concerns, even if it's not possible, they'll, they'll give it a good, a good look over.
With that, we will call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Andy's opposed, motion passes. I appreciate the efforts and the discussion.
Now, we just passed the second one, right?
Right.
Once they pass the second one, the rezone, the subdivision can move forward.
Oh, so that's all in one?
Right.
Now, do we need anything from Mayor Pat Flabber, that's covered by what we just did?
Yes, it's covered by what you just did.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone, I know that was worrisome, you'll probably have nightmares, and you'll probably be thrilled to death when you see that neighborhood built.
It's going to be a very good project.
Yes, it will, and it's incredibly important that we make this effort to move forward, what you've just done would have taken over a year, maybe two or three years in Portland, and that's the way we will get developers in here, is because we want to work with them, and I appreciate the efforts everyone has made to do that. We'll go on to the next item, item H, resolutions, and this has to do with reimbursement, a reimbursement resolution for purchase of equipment, and this is something Larry will present.
Okay, before we get started on that, I have to make mention that we got, that we've got H and I switched around, so if you're looking at the next page, it says I-1, we don't want to do I-1 yet, we want to do H-1, but it's missed.
Did I put it together wrong?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, we're going to go to H-1, which is about four pages in from I-1, so the resolution is first, and that'll keep us on track with our council agenda. So, the resolution is required by the Department of Treasury for funding of the purchase of the back truck and the street sweeper, and that shall not exceed $760,000. It'll be financed over a 10-year period of time, and the street sweeper will be funded by the City Streets Fund, and then the back truck will be funded by the Water Sewer Fund. So, this is all part of meeting the June, well, actually, this deadline is for April 29th, for the resolution and the ordinance to be passed, has to be into the Department of Treasury by the April 29th, and then we have some other paperwork that has to be done as a result of that resolution and ordinance, that has to be completed actually before April 29th as well. So, this is the funding package that we've been working on for the purchase of those two pieces of equipment, and we'd recommend that you approve Resolution 717, enter into reimbursement obligation, obligation not to exceed $760,000.
Do we have questions or comments from the council?
Sorry, Mayor, only one, I'm for it, I know we need it, we've got to support our Public Works, but I am just curious, and I should have mentioned this weeks ago, but I didn't think of it, when we first started discussing this, have we ever thought about doing like a timeshare option with another city for a street sweeper, so we split the cobs?
You're talking about, this is the biggest city in Clickatad County, I don't know, anything even similar to that would work out?
Yeah.
Well, I don't know what kind of sweeper the county has.
We'll have to find out, I guess, but.
Do they even have one?
I don't know if they have one or not.
I don't remember seeing them driving any.
It's likely that.
I know the state does.
Yeah. Well, I'm sure that Public Works would tell you that it's hard to, to schedule something like that, when it's, but it's pretty nice to have it ready and at your fingertips and and go out there and get it done when it needs to get done.
I just took my ear.
The problem with sharing with somebody is you both want to do it at the same time.
Yeah.
Because the leaves only fall a certain part of the year and the red rock that needs to be picked up only goes a certain year, certain times of the years as well.
Right. I understand. I just thought I'd ask the question.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions from the council? If not, we'll call for a vote.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number 717, authorizing the city of Goldendale to enter into reimbursement obligation with the city of Goldendale in an amount not to exceed $760,000.
Do we have a second?
I guess I'm the one seconding all night today, so you asked me.
Thanks, Kevin. It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 717, authorizing the city of Goldendale to enter into a reimbursement obligation with the city of Goldendale in an amount not to exceed $760,000. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
I think we have it unanimous. Thank you. Thank you very much, council. This is harder work than we imagined, I think. Larry?
The second one is related, is four pages forward now, back to I-1, authorization to purchase personal property. And this is the actual ordinance that establishes the contract between the Department of Treasury and the city of Goldendale to pay back, to pay back the funds of $760,000. So this is also a recommendation of the Department of Treasury. And again, it is effective on April 28th, which is one day before it meets the deadline of the April 29th. And it would complete the funding package for these two pieces of equipment.
Very good. Do we have comments or questions before we call for a motion? Do we have a motion?
Well, Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 1506, authorizing the acquisition of personal property and executing a financial contract for the same.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that. This is Andy.
Thanks, Andy. It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 1506, authorizing the acquisition of personal property and executing a finance, a financing contract for the same. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion passes. Well, council, we're sort of getting to the easier part of the meeting now. We'll have the report of officers and the city administrator and we'll begin with Larry Bellamy.
The only thing I wanted to address was just that the Public Works Committee, and I'm not sure who's on that committee, but we do need to put together a committee meeting to discuss the issues that were brought about, brought to us this evening by Kay with regard to the handicap, handicap spaces downtown. So I will make email contact with the Public Works Committee and see if we can set something up to discuss that in more, in more detail.
Good. That's all. Thank you, Larry. And the council will start with Andy.
Mayor, I have nothing tonight.
Thank you, Andy. Lauren?
I don't have anything this evening.
Phil?
I don't have any.
Kevin?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the young lady that spoke about the handicap parking. She had her numbers correct. She was quick and precise. And as you know, we have an aging population in Goldendale and I completely support her. And I hope we can get this resolved fairly quickly.
I think we've covered all of the council members. Oh, my.
No, Mayor, I'll just, Airport Committee, do we need to have a future meeting sometime? Can we?
Right now, right now, we're awaiting for the fuel system to be delivered.
Yeah.
It's been ordered. And it's about a four-month wait and our four-month lead time. And now, we're working on the civil plans and specifications for communication facilities being installed, PUD being installed.
Okay.
So we're still in the construction effort, design and construction effort. And I don't think we need an airport committee just yet.
Okay.
We do need to focus on the plan specifications, getting the rest of the civil work done this summer.
Right, okay.
On the mayor's side, as we began to get out from under the restrictions of COVID, a number of events that we used to have that were used to help people to be able to support programs they were interested in. One of those is coming up on May 15th. It's a ways away. The Goldendale Pregnancy Resource Center has invited the city of Goldendale, so each one of us, for their annual Walk for Life. The walk starts on the Clickedat County Courthouse lawn at 10:00 a.m. and includes about two miles of smooth sidewalks along Columbus, Simcoe, Roosevelt, and Broadway. The, the way that the walk is carried out is each walker tries to get people to pledge for that. And each walker that has $25 in pledges, and I believe it's $5 a pledge, receives a custom water bottle. And there will be prizes for other fun categories, such as the walker with the fastest time or the most overall pledges. It's a competition, but this is a, some of those things that we miss having gotten to do the last couple of years. So I think it's good that we, that people know about it. I hope people will participate in it. And I want to congratulate the council for a ton of hard work tonight. I read over this agenda. We're back and forth through it and it was very, very complex. And you've done a fine job. And Larry has done a great job of guiding this to a solution. I think, I think we would regret it terribly having rejected all of this very, very promising work for Goldendale City. With that, we'll go to public comment. Do we have anyone in the council room or on the phone that would like to make a public comment? There's not anything indicated on the Zoom screen. And our members of the public have noted that they don't have any comments that they would like to make. With that, we'll move to a motion to adjourn this city council meeting.
Mr. Andy, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Andy. A second?
I'll go ahead and second, but I always find it funny that the quickest motion always comes at the end of the day.
That's just human nature. All in favor of adjournment of the meeting?
Aye.
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 I don't call for a motion for a call. Pardon me?
I didn't get it.
I didn't hear it.
You did.
We've had our vote. And we'll go on to adjourn city council for April 19th, 2021, at 8:20. Thank you, everyone, for hard, hard work. I really appreciate what you've done. Thank you. Tonight.